Is anyone in the waiting room?
It's going to take some time for people to show up on the side as attendees. We're going to start the live stream. Okay, we should be all set.
Okay. All set, ready to go? Good evening. This is the Village of American Planning Board meeting for May 12th, 2021. In attendance tonight are the members of the planning board, Richard Littman, Cindy Goldstein, Ellen Styler, John Burney, and myself. Also with us are Amber Novak, Ashley Lay, Teresa Baker, Frank Tavolachi, Estevan Garcia, our consulting engineer, Susan Oakley, our consulting landscape architect, Dennis Drogen, assistant building inspector, and who's on the phone? Is that Dennis?
That's Dennis Drogen.
Okay, that's Dennis, okay. I forgot, until I have to like see his number, okay. Okay. We are going to open tonight's agenda with the Oriental Beach Club if Mr. Spatz is here. There he is. Okay. The last time we had the Oriental Beach Club application, it's a site plan and wetlands permit application was back in December. Since then, the applicant has been at HCZM, got a lot accomplished there. A public hearing was noticed for tonight. So Andrew, are you good?
Good evening Chair, members of the planning board.
That guy going, you know, he was on his skateboard with the Gatorade.
Wish I could stand on a surfboard. Yes, good evening Chair, members of the planning board, Andrew Spatz on behalf of the applicant from Waikiki Country Club in beautiful New Rochelle. I want to first thank the board and council for the planning board. Just taking a step back, we re-noticed for a public hearing for the 26th of May for wetland purposes because of the requirement of 15 days. With that being said, I don't have my team assembled this evening to actually discuss it. So I'm respectfully going to ask that we adjourn to the 26th so I have my entire team to discuss, and then obviously Chair and members of the planning board can open it up for a public hearing. I will say that we do have a consistency finding from HCZM, and I believe that may have been circulated already to members of planning.
Yes, yeah.
And we are very much looking forward to being able to have a public comment on the 26th. And again, I think again Chair and planning board and council for assisting and making it possible so we could actually be placed on the calendar this evening.
Okay. Since we, the village put a notice in the paper that there was going to be a public hearing tonight, we will open this for comments, there's a public hearing that we already opened, that we opened in December.
Yes.
So if there's anyone from the public who wants to speak on the application to expand the terrace at the Oriental and the Beach Club, please raise your hand right now and we'll allow you to speak. If not, we'll do this all again in two weeks.
Absolutely, and Chair, that would be for the wetland permit component of this, which we had.
Well, we'll do everything at once.
Right, right, great, great.
Site plan, right, we'll do everything at once, right, right. So Amber, do you see anyone raising their hand?
Yes, so I'm going to, oh, I'm sorry. We did have someone raise their hand and it seems like they've put their hand down. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand and you will be promoted to speak.
Change of heart.
Okay, so we, keeps bouncing. I'm just going to enable you to speak.
Hi, it's Doreen Roney. I have one question on this permit that you're looking over. I'm not sure if this is in a coastal erosion hazard area. I'm not sure where this stands at Harbor Coastal Zone, but I do know that DEC is the only agency that issues permits for any work in a hazard zone. So I'm not sure where that is with your board or Harbor Coastal Zone, but the area might be in this hazard area. So I'm wondering if the applicant at least had a conversation with the DEC regarding this.
Chair, am I able to address that issue?
Yes.
Yes, I know, again, we, the application was thoroughly vetted through HCZM. We appeared on several different occasions. We did, they did arrive at a consistency with the LWRP. Our engineers and consultants absolutely have made contact with the respective agencies and departments, both locally, state, federal, what have you, in terms of what would be necessary for the issuance and approval of the site plan approval and wetlands permit. I will, excuse me, I will reiterate this to our team and make sure that they have made contact with the respective agencies that would be involved and have to perhaps comment on this. But we believe that all items have been checked and crossed. But again, I will consult with the consultants tomorrow.
Since we'll be revisiting this application in much more detail in two weeks, we'll hold this over as an open question.
And I appreciate the comment though, thank you, and I'll pass it on to the teams.
I would hate in the end for someone to have to go back because DEC is the only agency that's responsible for issuing permits if this is in a coastal erosion hazard area.
Then that's, as I said, that's way above my pay grade and our team would absolutely address that issue. And as I said, I will consult with the team tomorrow and make sure that that's been addressed.
Thanks.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
It's been a long time, I haven't heard, I haven't seen you in a long time or spoken to you. Good to hear from you.
Okay, thank you, Doreen. Anyone else with any questions or comments on this application? This is good because we'll get answers by the next meeting.
Perfect.
Do you know anyone who wishes to speak?
Okay.
By the way, for anybody that uses Zoom, holding iPhone, it's great for your triceps. I mean, you have to switch from side to side and you can really get a great workout doing this, folks. So I encourage it, it really is, I mean, who knew?
Just don't start singing with rock songs.
Promise, all right, Chair, so we'll see everybody on the 26th of May. We'll see you in two weeks, and thanks again, and have a great meeting, everybody. Good night.
Okay.
Take care, thanks.
Okay. All right, that's that. Next up on the agenda is a public hearing for a subdivision application. We have 517 Walnut Street. It involves the lot at 517 Walnut Street, a lot out on Pine Street, 510 Pine Street. And there's a, is 517 Walnut the house or the vacant lot? There's two lots on Walnut and one on Pine Street behind the two on Walnut. And the applicant who owns all three lots wishes to reduce the number of lots down to two. So we have representatives from the applicant here with us. So you are up to present the application to the planning board and to members of the public core watching.
Can you hear me? This is Sid Schlohman.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Not sure why.
Could you identify yourself?
Sid Schlohman, applicant, architect for, on behalf of the owner, Mr. Jeffrey Valvano, who is the owner of all three properties in question. I'm going to pull up the site screen. Trying to see the site plan. Some reason I'm... Are you able to see the screen? Are you able to see the site plan?
These are not the same plans that were submitted to us.
I'm sorry?
Maybe I'm mistaken. I don't remember seeing these plans, but yeah, why don't you walk through them?
Are you able to see them on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So the application before you is there are three lots, 510 Pine Street, you see here on the lower left, 517 Walnut on the right side, and the adjacent vacant lot, which is adjacent to Walnut Street. The application before you, it's not necessarily a subdivision because we're not creating a new lot, we are actually trying to combine portions of lots. So the intent for the applicant whose primary residence will be 510 Pine Street is to expand his rear yard and taking the lot, the vacant lot on Walnut Street, instead of building another house or going through the process of an application for a new house, he would like to enlarge the rear lot of the rear yard of 510 Pine Street and as well as creating additional off-street parking on Walnut Street for the, it's a two-family home for the residents of 517 Walnut Street. So by doing so, the lot line between the vacant lot and 510 Pine would be moved over about 100 feet, creating an 18-foot depth for three cars parking space. That would be for 510 Walnut Street. That's basically the application. We, the parking lot spaces, the three parking spaces would encompass approximately 500 square feet. We are looking into, if we pave them, we would create a stormwater plan. We have retained Michael Stein from Hudson Engineering, who is very familiar with the street and the properties. Or we are open to exploring options for impervious pavers or gravel driveways if that's something that may be desired. But in essence, we're eliminating a buildable lot. We are helping the yard for 510 Pine, and we are creating three off-street parking spaces on a dead-end street. So that's the application before you.
I don't think you have the right screen, Chair.
I'm sorry, you're not seeing it?
It looks like a house.
It looks like two houses, side by side.
No. Hang on, let me see. I'm going to stop sharing and then reshare, I'm going to try that. There we go. Is that better?
Yeah, that's the drawing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so just to rehash, so while you have it in front of you, 510 Pine is on the left side of the screen, 517 Walnut is on the right side, and the vacant lot is here on the top portion. They are all abutting lots owned by one owner. The intent is to increase the rear yard of 510 Pine, put up a perimeter privacy fence in accordance with village code, create three off-street parking spaces on Walnut, and those are really the only changes, and ultimately relocate the lot line that divides 510 Pine and the vacant lot up to where it says new fence here, the 46-foot line over here. That's basically the application before you.
Okay. Okay, so this is basically just a site, like a plot plan. We, in order to continue with this, we're going to need a survey of all the properties.
And I can pull that up.
Now, this particular, this particular, the 517 Walnut house is under construction. Is this the original house or with the new addition?
The house is not under construction. The house has a permit for interior and exterior alterations. There are no dimensional changes to the house.
There's no dimensional change because it looked like an addition being put. I went by today to look at the site.
No, if anything, it's a reduction. We're removing a carport, we're removing the non-compliant stairs on the side yard. So if anything, we are lessening the degree of non-conformity of that side yard. So basically, it's not an addition.
All right, okay, it just looked like one, it had no siding on the back of the house. It looked like it was new. I didn't stay long enough to.
I mean, it's a beautification project, there's new siding, new windows. Approved by the ARB, and so, but there's no added square footage at all.
All right, not that that matters, I just, what we were looking at, that's all.
Okay.
Is this the current, is this the current condition? It's a combination of the current condition and what you would like to do.
This plot plan is created from the surveys. I can pull up the survey in a second, but it's exactly the same. And the only difference is we, if you can see my cursor, we want to take this line here, which is the property line. We want to relocate it right here where it says new fence. That's really the only dimensional change of property lines. And then where you see 18 feet and three cars, we want to help and create three off-street parking spaces that are dedicated to 517 Walnut.
Okay.
And so those three spaces will be accessed off of Walnut?
Correct.
Is there a, there must be a sidewalk there?
There is a, there's a grass and curb. We would create a curb cut in accordance with the village standards, but there's, I don't, there's no walking sidewalk there.
I don't think you made the parking setbacks to do the, to just have that be an open, I don't think you made, need the parking setbacks to be able to just have it open like that, to have that be a very wide curb cut coming in.
Couple of issues here, I mean, is the area where the trees are and the line that goes along where the cars are parked to the right of that, is that the end of the lot line and the trees are in the village right-of-way?
The, well, actually, these trees are no longer here, they've been.
I know, that's the point. You have an open application, you've already removed the trees.
Correct.
The trees are now gone.
Right, they were approved by the village and removed.
No, they weren't approved by the village, I spoke to them today. They didn't, they totally know anything about it.
Perhaps the owner is on, perhaps you can allow him to.
Regardless of that, we're just trying to understand it. Is that the village right-of-way there where the trees are?
Yes, the property line is.
Because we don't have a survey, so it's hard for us to.
Oh, well, the survey was submitted with the application, but I will pull it up for you.
All right, if it was submitted, we'll have to get it from the building department. Unless I'm missing something, but I talked to other members of the planning board, they didn't have it either, so somehow it got lost in the shuffle. Does the survey have the topographical lines on it, even though this is pretty flat?
It's a pretty flat property. This is a survey for Walnut and the vacant lot. Let me see if I have the.
So yeah, that's the end of the lot line there, and then there's the right-of-way.
It says concrete curb.
Right, I mentioned there's a curb before the street, correct.
Right. All right, we'll have to get copies of those documents if, we may have to resubmit them. Okay, so that's one thing that's an open issue, submit the survey.
Oh, it wasn't part of the package, you don't have it?
Does anybody on the planning board have this?
No.
No, the planning board members don't have it.
Okay.
All right. Okay, Ashley, you were saying that the proposed parking doesn't meet the village code for setbacks for off-street parking?
It was not clear. They haven't provided this, there are specific setbacks related to off-street parking, and they vary depending on whether or not it's a single-family home or multifamily home. So you need to update your application to be more clear about how many residences will be within 517, and you'll need to add the parking setback regulations to your zoning table. And you'll need to show how those parking spaces are accessed because it's not clear from what's provided how the cars will get into those spots. If they'd be just driving over the curb or if there's going to be a new curb cut, or if you're going to be coming off the existing driveway, in which case you need to have a little bit more space for some turnaround.
Yeah, the intent was a curb cut right to Walnut, so I'll get those specifications and incorporate it.
Okay. Okay. Do we need to do, so you have the survey, so you'll be able to get that to us? And you want to see in that, what are the other open issues here?
This is Teresa, I don't know if you can hear me, can you?
Yes.
Great. One thing we want to be sure that we have is a drawing showing the reconfigured parcels so that they can be signed by the chair for filing in the county. So you'll want to provide that along with the changed meets and bounds description for the lot that's being enlarged as well as the lot that's going to have the parking added to it. So I just want to make sure that you provide that as well in the next go-round.
Well, yes, of course, I just assumed this was a information gathering meeting, and I wasn't sure if we would retain the surveyor and attorney for the meets and bounds once the planning board approves, or you need to see that as part of the approval?
Well, I think, I think we just need to, we need to see the final arrangement of the lines. You can always provide the meets and bounds description and the deeds as a condition of the approval. But one question I had here is, just make sure I understand, you are adding the parking spaces to the two-family, the lot containing the two-story, oh, the one on Walnut?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, so in essence, it'll be almost a reverse flag lot, it'll be an L-shaped lot. It's 822 square feet of land that would be contiguous with 517 Walnut, and that would be part of the meets and bounds, correct?
And before you come back to us, would you have made a decision about the surface of those parking spaces? Because normally, we don't, we don't see gravel as being pervious because it's compacted by the action of the cars. So we would want to see a stormwater plan for that, for those spaces.
So do you want to see a stormwater plan as part of the concept? Or know that there will be a stormwater plan if you approve the parking spaces?
Well, I would assume it's all part and parcel of this application and our approval. It wouldn't come later unless, but maybe Teresa or Kathy or someone else or Ashley can.
No, that should, that should not come later, that should be part of the review, yeah.
Once we approve, this, this may not be a subdivision to you, but legally, because it's changing the lot lines and it has to get, it has to get filed at the West Shepherd County Clerk's Office.
Right.
This is basically the same process as a subdivision.
Okay.
Everything has to be tied up in a nice neat bow, and we have everything done before the final approvals are given, okay?
Okay, so before the.
We need to have a, you know, a nice clean survey showing the current conditions. Then we need a really good drawing showing the new plan, you know, something separate, not the way it looks now where it's all sort of in one. The other things that have already been mentioned is any landscape improvement, any placement for the trees you've taken down going to be put anywhere else on the property? Anything screening, the parking, where's the curb going to be? How are you going to deal with the utility pole? And the wires holding it up, which are also, might be blocking the entrance to where you want to put the car?
No, it's, the parking spaces are clear beyond that, but we'll address all the landscaping as well.
Right, we need all the detail for that, if there's any landscaping to be done with regards to compensating for the trees you already took down. We don't have a tree law, but usually people do some planting when they do something like this. Then, you know, a total, a complete landscaping plan. And on the document, it should indicate what trees were removed already, even though we didn't have an approved plan. Okay.
I think, I think Susan had.
Topo lines on the survey, Teresa, I don't know.
It's a relatively flat lot. I don't know if the topo is on there, I'll double-check.
Yeah, it didn't look like it when you pulled it up.
I think we have another better survey.
What other notes do we have on this one? I don't know, is it, we have to do SEACRA and type this for SEACRA. And of course, you have, you have the engineering memorandum already from our consulting engineer asking questions with regards to the stormwater. So you have that information already. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to pursue the issue of the trees that were removed. I don't know whether, you know, we as a planning board would ask to see that documentation. You know, the landscape memo says that some trees were removed. Applicants said those were approved to be removed. I don't know if it's us as a planning board that would pursue that to see documentation or whether that would be another entity within the village, but no, I, I'm concerned about trees being removed without authorization.
Well, well, we all are. Because usually when there's an application that's filed with the building department, nothing gets done until the approvals are made. So it is disturbing to see that the trees were removed, frankly.
Especially if they were in the village right-of-way.
If they're in the village right-of-way, they're village trees, and the owner had no authority to remove them. And I called the Department of Public Works today. I spoke to the superintendent of public work to ask him if he gave approval for the trees to be removed. He said he was unaware of it and was going to. We did not know whether or not the trees were in the right-of-way at that time. It's still not 100% clear. He has to look at a survey, and we didn't have a survey, I didn't have a survey to give him. But you may be hearing from someone from the building department or DPW with regards to whether it did.
If you'd like, the owner has his hand raised and he'd like to contribute some information regarding the trees.
Okay, if you have, if you have information as to who gave you approval to remove them? Do you want to stop sharing your screen?
I'll stop sharing, he has his hand raised.
Right, okay, he's there.
You will need to unmute yourself to speak.
Yes, this is Jeff Van Ohio. I'm the property owner of the three properties, the three lots. The approval for the tree was, I had a conversation with multiple arborists who mentioned to me that there is no approval needed in the village. And then I spoke to Frank Tavolachi, the building inspector, who told me similarly, you don't need an approval to remove the trees. However, we had very much wished to go before you guys, before we removed the trees. As I think you guys can understand with the pandemic, there is a backlog everywhere, including with arborist. I had scheduled those trees to be removed back in January or February, and I pled deeply to get on the agenda for this board with the building department. and I pled deeply to get on the agenda for this board with the building department, and it took me about three months. If I canceled that appointment, I would never have got those trees removed until August. And so that's basically the entire story.
Mr. Valvano, yes, if the trees were on your property, you don't need approval from the village to remove them. But the point is that the trees may have been on village property, and therefore they weren't your trees to remove. Okay, that's the point. Now, that's really not in the purview of the planning department right now. It's, you know, it'll be followed up by the village, because if you remove village property, then they have recourse, and there are things that they will probably ask you to do. Perhaps replace the trees or something, but, you know, that aside.
Well, we do plan to replace the trees, we do plan to place trees.
Okay, well, well, you know, I'll just, you know, it came to light because of the application at the planning board, and because usually when someone is planning to do something and they have to get approvals, they don't go ahead and start the process whether they had an arborist or not available.
I spoke directly with Frank, and I was led to believe-
Not relevant to the discussion here. The discussion is, the trees were removed. They may or may not be village trees on the village right of way. If they are, the village will follow up with you, okay? It's no, unfortunately, no longer an issue for the planning board because the trees are gone. Okay? The planning board is whether we can make the parking spaces off-site work as Ashley or our consulting planner pointed out. You have to be within the zoning code and things like that. So your architect understood the issue that she brought up, and he'll follow up and make the notes on the plans accordingly. You may have to set back a little bit further or whatever from the, from the- So we'll look at, we'll look at it all. I mean, you know, we're here to work with you, and we'll go back and forth. I'm sorry you couldn't get on the agenda sooner, but that's, you know, there was a big backlog for everything.
Understood, I'm just giving you my version.
One of the, one of the criteria to get on the planning board agenda or any land use board agenda is a complete application. And so what we're doing tonight is really a preliminary, which, which is an accommodation by the staff and this board to look at what I would say is an incomplete application. There's a lot of detail missing, so we're happy to meet with you and help move things along. But, you know, we've all been working during the pandemic, and we have-
So, so basically, excuse me, since this is considered a subdivision by code and whatnot, you should look at the subdivision section of the code to make sure that everything that's in there is being submitted to us. And as Ms. Goesting said, we are, you know, entertaining the application tonight, even though it wasn't complete. We have a list of things. If there's any question about it, feel free to contact Amber Novak in the planning department. And I'm going to now put the question to Teresa with regards to the secret. Is this something we, since we don't have all the information, should we proceed with the secret typing or hold that over until next meeting?
We can, we can certainly hold it over to the next meeting, but I believe it'll be a type-two action regardless because it's parking as an accessory to a, to a residential use. And I think Ashley has, agrees with that, so I think we're all on the same page there.
So does the board want to, typing for secret purposes then?
If they're not going to another board, there's no rush, right? It doesn't matter, does it?
No, they don't have to go to HCZM. Do they have to go to VAR?
Parking screens?
Yeah, I don't think so. It's just not checked. We have, we have this little checklist that we go through, and that box wasn't checked. All right, so since there's no rush, why don't we wait until we have a more complete application then?
Excuse me, Chair, I'd like to encourage the applicant to, as part of the complete package, prepare a landscape plan to replace the trees that were coming down and to screen the parking from the neighbors.
Okay, I appreciate the comments, and we were well aware this was a fact-finding meeting without a full application, and that's the way we were kind of guided to, to go before this board. So now we're very well aware-
Nobody told us.
Okay, well, we're very well aware of what's needed for the next meeting, and we appreciate it.
Okay, all right, good.
All right, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
I think this was noticed as a public hearing, and there are a number of members of the public-
Oh, that's true. So now at this point that we've gotten this far, we need to open the, we need to open the public hearing. It was noticed in the newspaper, and you noticed it to the neighbors to see if there's anyone here that wants to speak on the application. So I need a motion to open the public hearing, thank you, Ashley.
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Richard?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Then I also vote yes to open the public hearing.
So I'm going to go in order of appearance. So we have Rob Thorpe, you're allowed to speak, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi, thanks very much. So pretty much new to the village, moved in just before the lockdown last year. So first time kind of sitting in on one of these meetings. And actually, procedurally, I didn't, I wasn't notified about this work, so lots of our neighbors here. I'm at 239 Melbourne Avenue. Everybody else on the street seems to have been, or those with properties abutting, 517 seem to have had formal notifications, I have. I don't know if it's something we've done or not done in the last year notifying me that we're here, paying taxes. But for some reason, we weren't notified, so just a point to bear in mind. Looking forward, I'm glad you've kind of held this over for the next meeting, but I think I'm really interested in the surface runoff and the drainage issues coming off that property. The trees, currently, we have a nice level of screening between 239 and 517, and I would wish to know more about what's going to happen to those trees. And then also a definition of unbuildable. If the property line is going to be burged, essentially, what does it mean then for the people of that lot? What exactly do we understand, do you understand by unbuildable? Does that mean a swimming pool can't be put in? Does that mean a cabana can't be put in? Does that mean a granny flat can't be put in? I'm trying to avoid, you know, clearly anything hideously ugly being put up at the back of the historic district. Okay, thank you, that's all my comments, four of them.
Kathy, do you want me to answer that question regarding unbuildable? It merely means that it's no longer a separate lot, but it doesn't in any way prevent the people that own the lot, which is now very large, from building accessory uses like pools and landscaping and all the things that we've, we've reviewed here on the planning board. So any accessory uses that are allowed under the code can be built back there, just not, it's, it's no longer a separate lot.
Okay, but it could have a brand-new and permanent structure built above ground, for instance.
My house.
A two-story building?
No, we're talking about accessory uses to the existing residence that's currently on the lot.
So could it be a tool shed or a gazebo or?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I would hope that if the applicant has any plans to do anything like that on the lot now, it would be shown in the site plan that is submitted to us for approval.
We have absolutely no plans to build anything.
Okay, at this time, right, but who knows?
Correct.
Right, okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Thorpe?
No, it doesn't. It caused me with some trepidation, I suppose, for what might happen in 10 or 15 years' time. But that, you know, that's a bridge we'll cross when we get to it. And I totally understand, so yeah, thank you for defining that for us.
Okay. Okay, thank you, we have other people.
The next, you have Robert Levitin.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, for recognizing us. My name is Robert Levitin, I've been a village resident for over 30 years. I was the medical director of the emergency department at United Hospital and brought our home from Conrad Hanny, who was the village architect. And I can tell you lots of stories about our village from Conrad's perspective.
And you live on Melbourne also?
I live on 249, I'll be sharing my screen momentarily. But I just want to let you know, good evening, Frank. Frank and I have talked about my concern at length. We have engaged Michael Stein as well. I'll go through the story. We've been in this home for many years, it was built around 1867. We had a virtually wonderful experience with the work that we've done in the home. If you know our home on Melbourne, it's quite lovely. We found that when the construction of the homes on Pine Street were permitted, we started getting water. And Frank says that's not possible, but the fact is, we started getting water in our basement. I'm now at the point where a storm, the water table will rise up to the level of the basement, and we'll be pumping anywhere from 3 to 10,000 gallons of water with a six-horse two-inch pipe that runs 200 yards down. May I share my screen? Am I allowed to share my screen?
Amber, he wants to share his screen.
Okay, we will promote you to panelist in order, in order to enable that one moment, please.
Thank you very much. Let's go to share my screen. All right, this is actually a picture, if you can see my screen, you know that you can see that? Great, so for many of us who are new, Bernany, we've been engaged with Bernany way before he left. What you're seeing for you is the picture of the storm drains in our neighborhood. So here, just to orient you, so this is Tompkins over here, coming down Melbourne Avenue. Here's Brook here, here's the aforementioned Wallace Street. And right over here is the property of 517. And now you can see the lots that we talked about. There is a storm system at the corner of Brook-
You're breaking up, your, your, your sound is breaking up a little bit.
Sorry for that, I'll try and talk more slowly, I am an emergency room doctor. What you can see here is one of the storm drain cisterns at the corner of Brook and Melbourne. There's another storm drain cistern here at 230. My home is right here at 249. And you can see this property where the directing the request for a parking lot will have an impact on water coming into my property. This drawing actually presented to us, what he suggested we do is at our expense that we connect our own storm drain and dig out on Melbourne to create a storm drain connection between our home and either the storm drain here, Met Brook and Melbourne, or the storm drain here at 231 Melbourne Avenue. Or he also said that we get through our backyard and come out onto Wall Street and connect to the storm drain that runs through these yards over here to Brook. These are estimated cost us $30,000, after which we do this. We were instructed that we would have to decrease to the village, and we would have to pay the village a maintenance for this work, which is kind of, I just don't get it. The concern I have is, the water that we're already getting is, I believe, will be impacted by the project. And so I'm very anxious, what a plan that Mr. Stein has produced for Sloman. I really would like, and, and Michael knows my property well. He's given me several ideas about what we could do. We're looking anywhere from $30,000 to $60,000 to manage the water. You can call our police department anytime I'm helping, I can notify them. I'm pumping because my gas engines are loud, to make sure that my neighbors are not disturbed by this. Because of the village ordinance, I can't just pump into the street. I have to run 200 yards of two-inch hose down to the storm drains so that I'm not interrupting any traffic. So I'm going to request to look at this very carefully, understanding the impact of our property.
Okay, okay, thank you, Dr. Levitin. I think that the storm drain and the runoff is already on our list. And it's one thing we always look at with our projects. The village code basically says that no one can create a situation where they're creating water running off from their property onto other people's properties. So we see where you're located, and hopefully, we will address all the concerns we have with regards to stormwater runoff.
But I would just like the board to please consider that we're not only talking about groundwater, but we're talking about underground water tables. How you can address that would be something I'd like to learn, because-
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we can, other than for, I mean, I have the same problem in my house. Somebody built a house behind us and other things happened, and this was before the stormwater regulations and codes were put in place. And we ended up putting in pumps and pumping the water out of our basement before it rises.
Chair, I have three pumps, one horsepower each. I have a six-horsepower gas engine pumping out a 1,000 square foot drywall.
Yeah, I've been there, so. I understand, the mannequin has a very high water table, depending on where you live. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chairperson, this is Sid Sloman, I just want to kind of chime in and say that whatever solution we come up with will address the stormwater to maintain the runoff in accordance with village code on the property, whether it's drywells, cul-de-sacs, rerouting, whatever the solution is, we would 100% comply with the village codes and maintain the water on the property without any concentrated runoff to another property, so that's, that's a given.
Okay, thank you. Amber, do we have other speakers who would like to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Could announce yourself for the record.
Doreen Roney, boy, are you not lucky to have the application I'm interested in. Um, I know this is minor in comparison to what I just heard, but, you know, there's this situation we have in the village where trees get cut down. I, on the Q and A, sent the code, and I believe it's 34287B. It might be a good idea to get some clarity on that code because trees are vegetation, vegetation is vegetation, and I'll just leave it there.
I read that section of the code today, Ms. Roney, since you sent it to me. I still had it in my inbox, and I pulled it up today and read it. I'm, I'm not sure it applies to this particular situation, but maybe Teresa. I'll send the information to Teresa and we'll look at it, okay?
It's up on the Q and A, did everybody receive it on the Q and A? That's what I'd like to know.
Okay, if it's up there, the problem with the Q and A and the chats is that the information doesn't get recorded as part of the public meeting. So we can't interact that way, that's why we're having people raise their hand and getting up and speaking. But we'll certainly look at that, that section of the code again with regards to taking the trees down while the application was pending. But the also, the also issue here is whether or not they were trees that were in the village, on village property.
Right.
That's the more, that's the more overarching concern at this point in time.
Thank you.
Turned out not to, they turned out to be on private property, then that would possibly apply. So we'll take them in order of, in order of-
Figure it out, right? Thank you for hearing.
Don't we always figure it out, Doreen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, if you would please introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Mike Schneider, I live at 229 Melbourne Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay, thank you. So I've been, I've been, I've been in this, I've been in my home for 17 years. So I've been, I've been, I've been in this, I've been in my home for seventeen years. I live directly behind five-ten Pine Street. And I've lived through, you know, the construction of that. And when I first got here, they had recently finished the other two adjacent homes on Pine Street. I know a lot of you weren't part of the process back then, so forgive me, but that was a complete disaster. The street was not suitably improved. And when the last house went up directly behind mine, which, by the way, was a vacant lot, that lot was owned by the original owner of five-seventeen Walnut. When five-ten aggression put up that house and supposedly took care of all the water problems, that was a complete, complete and utter lie. I get water because he raised the five-ten, five-ten Pine Street is, even though to the code's point, you're not supposed to change the topography where your house is higher than those surrounding you, so you wouldn't get the runoff. That's not what he did. So, you know, there was runoff. We had a bad storm when he built the house. And I had a wonderful conversation with the last owner about taking a look into my backyard, which was a swimming pool. I don't own a swimming pool, just so you know. And if you'd like, I could send you some pictures, which would, you know, explain why some of the frustration was. Over time, it has, I will say, it has gotten a little bit better. We haven't had as many of those, you know, seventy-two-hour, forty-eight-hour storms. But the ground in the back is always moist. You know, whether it's hot, it could be hot for a week, and you step into the yard and your foot, you know, goes down, because the water table is very high. To Dr. Levitan's point, all the water that sits there now, you know, rolls one way, and for whatever reason, it seems to roll towards Melbourne Avenue. And I guess what I would, to Sid Scholman's point, when they do their landscaping review, they probably, and for your review, there probably should be, you know, either drywells or cul-de-sacs put in that empty lot that is next to five-seventeen Walnut. Because if they had put more around the five-ten Pine property, there probably would be less issues. Even though the drywells that are there do connect, when the, when the, when the village got money to put in on, to put the actual drain system on beach, which didn't exist before, they connected that to Pine Street. The last village manager who assured me that I would never have water, because we never let water run off onto other people's property, because that's illegal. You know, he told me that there would be a kind of to what Rob was mentioning, where I could hook up into the, you know, into the drainage system on Pine. That was never put in. So I can't even, even if I wanted to, there's nothing for me to hook into. So I'm just telling you, as someone who's concerned and been here and watched a number of terrible things happen here around Pine Street, that whatever's done, should, everything should be very clear, from whatever fence he's gonna put up to, you know, the fact that those, you know, five-seventeen Pine Street, five-seventeen Walnut already has a driveway with parking spots. I don't know why they need any more, and why they can't park on the street, just like everybody else. I live in the house, you know, I can fit maybe three cars on my driveway, and if not, I park on the street. And by the way, I get tickets in front of my house, because I never went through, you know, going to the village and getting a special permit to park. I don't know why the extra spaces are actually needed or necessary. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can address the question on the parking spaces, I would love to. There's a driveway and a garage. It's just a straight shoot. There's two separate apartments. We don't know what kind of tenants we're gonna wind up with. If they're commuters, it could be possible we get two sets of tenants that each have two cars. That would put another three additional cars on Walnut Street. And in my very brief experience with the area, since we purchased the property, that street has become like overflow parking for some of the multifamilies that are in the area, but not necessarily on Walnut, or from other folks. We were actually trying to solve a problem here, because we felt like, you know, we're generally trying to improve and gentrify the area and restore old buildings. And we've really felt that was the lesser of the two evils. Because we, I could, you know, we could submit some pictures. I can document what that street looks like on the evening. And we just felt that if there's even one or two more cars on there, it's gonna be unbearable for the residents. So the last thing I personally want to do is give up a spot on my lot where my daughter can play to provide, you know, a piece of asphalt, but we wanted to do what was in the best, we thought was in the best interest of the neighborhood, and reducing the congestion on that street. And as far as the dampness and the moisture, I just want to say to you and Robert that, you know, myself and my wife are extremely sympathetic to these stories that are, you know, just coming to light. We're just learning about this now. What I will say is that I, I too am shocked that the front yard of Pine Street is constantly damp. Originally, I thought it was maybe from the sprinkler system that the previous owner had installed. I no longer think that's the case. However, to your comment on the drywells on five-seventeen Walnut Street, that lot does not seem to take the water like on the other side of the property line where Pine Street is. I don't necessarily think that would be a solution, but I just want to assure you, Robert, and anybody else that has concerns, that we're gonna do everything in our power to make sure that, you know, we do nothing to, you know, exacerbate your situation, because it sounds terrible. And unfortunately, there's nothing we could do to remedy, you know, the builders' choices and their mistakes. But I do apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to know, it sounds like there is some feedback coming from some people's Zoom potentially. So if you're not speaking, if you could, yourself, it just makes it a little bit difficult to hear speakers sometimes.
Thank you. Okay, Amber, if you want to un, un, un-promote the people who've already spoken, so that we can then get to some other people who haven't spoken yet? And then can circle back around if we, if we need to.
So, okay. If you could please introduce yourself for the record.
Hello, this is Eric Palace. Can you hear me?
Yes. Your screen name is something else, so could you repeat your name?
My wife's name is Rosario Villavicencio.
And I'm here too, Rosario.
And my name is Eric Palace. We live directly across the street at five-eighteen Walnut Street. My point about the parking is currently in front of where they propose to put spaces, you can park two cars on the street. If they break the curb there, you lose those two spaces in favor of three private spaces. So that really doesn't solve anything for parking on the street.
That and street.
I agree that this has become an overflow. We can see that people sometimes park here from as far away as the apartment building on the Post Road. And so I just don't see the benefit of breaking the curb and losing two public spaces to get three private spaces. I would say if they want to park there, they should use the existing driveway.
Okay, that's a good point. We'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I do not see any other
Dr. Levitan is still up as a participant, and his hand is on his screen. Can you see that? I see it on my screen. Am I the only one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, we'll circle back around, and then we're gonna have to wrap this up for tonight, since the applicant has a lot more work to do, and we'll be, we won't be closing this public hearing. We'll be adjourning it to a future date. No, we're good. Everybody's good? Okay, now that we're done here, everybody, we're done. Okay, Theresa, should we take a vote to adjourn? You're muted.
You got me. You, we should take, you should take a vote to continue the public hearing until, until a date that you set.
Okay, so I need a motion to continue the public hearing at a date in the future that would be set at a later time. Is that correct? Thank you. Okay, Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I will, yes. Okay. All right, I think that's everything on Walnut Street for tonight, and it's a lot. So thank you, everybody, for your participation, and everybody's got some work to do. Okay, let me get my agenda out here now. Scooped up my, yeah, here it is. Okay, all right, that brings us to the next section of the, of the agenda, which is some applications that are for site plan review. Does anybody have any problems with taking these out of order and doing B, two-seventy-five Mamaroneck Avenue first? Since I think this one is gonna be a little bit more straightforward for the, for the board, and the other two are gonna take a little bit more time. Do you have any problem with doing that?
No objection.
No? Okay. So if we have the the representatives for two-seventy-five Mamaroneck Avenue, we'll do you first, so you don't have to sit around and listen to the other ones.
Raise your hand. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi. Okay, if you would identify yourself, please.
Yes, good evening, Chair and Planning Board members. My name is Adriana. Here's bum. I don't know if you need this, since it's our first appearance.
We can see it.
Excuse me.
We can't that, but your name is on the screen. And that's your
That's my business card. My name's Adriana.
So you're Dorf and Nelson?
That's correct. I'm, I'm here, as mentioned by Paul Noto, in the letter that he sent on five-five-twenty-one. There was a previous letter sent on four-twenty-eight to the village planner, and that letter
Hold on a second. Just wait a second. Do we have a new letter coming in on five-five-twenty-one from Paul Noto? Anybody know anything about that? Okay. Okay. We don't have that information, but why don't you present the application to us?
Okay.
And we'll catch up on paperwork. Since this is your first time here, we can, we can catch up on paperwork before the next, the next time we meet.
Okay. Would you like me to read the letter for five-five into the record, or would you just?
Is it pertinent to, I mean, can you do an overview of the project first?
Sure, no problem.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we do an overview of the project?
Okay. As referenced in the four-twenty-eight letter to the village planner, we had an application, which is for site approval, to convert from a retail space to a church at the location of two-seventy-five Mamaroneck Avenue. The Life Church, Paul Notos, and my client are the new owners of this commercial building. It was a former CVS pharmacy and a dry cleaner. The reason that we are here today is because the building inspector on four-nineteen said that we needed a consistency determination from the HCZM. And also, so we filed the appropriate planning and planning board application, the EAF, the CAF, the HCZM application to convert the use. The, the
This is the planning board, and you're asking the change of use requires a site plan review.
Correct. So the, most of the work is going to be a complete remodel inside the building, because it is being converted from retail space to the use of a church. And I'm going to have several team members today that can give you a little bit more information. There is gonna be minor front facade work done as well. The purpose of tonight, in addition to starting the first appearance and to giving you more information, is to also hopefully start the SECRE process. It's an unlisted action. And we, we would request that the PB be the lead agency. And it's a permitted use, and it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. There's no environmental concerns, and with regard to the parking, there's a large municipal lot behind. With your permission, I'd like to recognize my team, who are available tonight. First one would be the associate pastor, Adam Bartlett, who is the one that signed the application dated four-twenty-six twenty-one. We also have the architect, Mr. Barry Hearn. And we have the executive pastor, Mundo Meneses, and Jim DeGregorio, who is from the New York location. With your permission, I'd like to recognize them.
If they could raise their hands, I'm not sure if everyone has their accurate names. Display. Okay, thank you.
I think we're all on. Hi, I'm Adam Bartlett. I'm with, I'm the, with the owner. I'm with the Life Church. And I am in Memphis, Tennessee. Unique situation. So I am in Memphis, Tennessee, but we have just a little backstory on the church to make, make it make sense a little bit. We had recently joined and merged with an existing church in the Westchester County area. They're actually meeting in White Plains right now. And so we joined with them about a year and a half ago or so. And we have found this location, purchased this building, and are converting this existing property into a church building. I have lots of info, not sure what else, you know, we need at this time from the, for you guys.
Yeah, because I had to print something out, so I couldn't see when you're near my printer. Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. I think that's sufficient for, for the purposes of the planning board, since we're focusing basically on the site, in the site plan. Okay.
My name is Barry Hearn. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm the architect on the project, just here to answer questions about it. Like I said, for site plan purposes, we're doing nothing to the exterior or adding anything onto the exterior of the building. The outside of the building will be painted on the two sides and the back. On the front, there's a finished material, a couple of finished materials, brick veneer, aluminum storefront glazing, and then there's some metal siding above the aluminum storefront and glazing, which is in pretty bad condition. And our intent is to paint the brick veneer, replace the aluminum storefront, and replace the metal siding with a synthetic stucco product.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant have any other information they wish to present to us at this time? There's really, I mean, by village code, this has to come to us, because it's a change. There's really, I mean, by, by village code, this has to come to us, because it's a change of use, but because there really is not a lot on the exterior, there's really nothing on the exterior that you're, you're doing. We can type this for SEACRA and send you along to HCZM. Does anybody on the planning board have any questions at this time, or is there anything that Ashley, you want to add? There's
Yeah. I, I, I'm sorry. I wanted to add one quick question that I meant, one quick point of information I meant to add earlier. As you know, the property is part of the town of Mamaroneck as well, and we have just filed an application for tax exemption and have been advised that it is being granted as a church. So it will be recognized as of the June 1st billing.
So what I was going to say is that the attorney mentioned classifying it as an unlisted action, but my recommendation is actually to classify it as a type 2 action under SEACRA. I think it qualifies under 617.5C18 as well as 2, because it is the reoccupancy of an existing building, and there's no new footprint involved.
Okay, thank you.
I agree, I agree with Ashley. Yeah, it qualifies under several.
And we don't have any, we don't have any engineering issues for Mr. Garcia on this particular application.
So I, I would just, I got confused, and I'm, the planning board application says, a description of the work being proposed says remodeling of existing retail space, and that says complete demolition. So that may have started folks down a path that you don't need to go down, because you're not completely demolishing the building. You're just probably demolishing the inside of it to re, to refit it. So I, I would just update the planning board application and get rid of the words complete demolition, because that's not what you're doing.
For sure. That is not what we're doing.
Right. That, I'll take the hit for that one. I'm sorry. A lot of demolition, but it's a lot of interior.
Interior demolition, so you're not creating, creating any new floor areas. There's no new requirement for any new parking spaces or anything, so you're reoccupancy of an existing building.
And, and so Ashley, by, by suggesting this as a type 2 action, we're actually making this a more straightforward application.
Yes.
Unlisted, again, takes us down a different pathway, and if they fit squarely in that section of the code, then that's how they should be typed.
Right. Okay. Okay, so following that along, I need a motion to type this as a type 2 action for SEACRA purposes?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Second.
Come on, guys. Okay, all right. So there's a motion on the table to type this as type 2. Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Where's Ellen? Ellen?
Ellen, yes.
And, and I vote yes as well. Okay. So your next step then would to go to the HCZM meeting for consistency with the LWRP, which also should, well, I don't want to speak for them, but you'll go there, and when you're done with them, and they do whatever it is they're going to do, you'll come back here for the final site plan approval. In the meantime, if you want to submit an amended application, you can send it to Amber. And Amber Novak, I think you've probably got her email. You've been in contact with her already. And just for the record, and then we'll see you when we see you, hopefully, not too long from now. Okay?
All right, can I, just to, just to clarify for my own sake, can you hear me? The next step would be, we go, which we've already filed for the application for the HCZM.
It's easy.
Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission.
You're on their agenda for the 19th of May, and so potentially come back to the planning board for the 26th, if HCZMC approves your application on the 19th.
And then how, where does the Board of Architectural Review, because based on the letter from the Building Department of Recommendation, we need to go for the Board of Architectural Review. How does that work with the coming back here? Can that happen congruently? Does anything happen after we get planning board approval? How does that work exactly? Just so I'm clear?
That can be concurrent. You can file that at any time.
Great.
Okay. Okay. All right, you all are finished here for tonight. You don't have to sit through the next two applications.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Okay, we have another applicant here, Phillips Park Road, and then we have Hyview Street, and Hyview Street's going to be a work session with the board. So do you want to, you all want to do Phillips Park Road first? So to sit through? Have to sit through Hyview Street? Okay. Okay, who do we have here from 355 Phillips Park Road, which was an application for, let's see, we did a site plan review, we did a good work on this application. It was approved back in October, I believe. Construction has started. It's well on its way. The applicant today is now asking for some changes to the site plan. And so I'd like to understand sort of what's been going on since we last saw you.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair.
Between you and the Board of Architectural Review with regards to some changes that were made to the approved plans. So why don't you bring everybody on the planning board up to date with what changes were made? And what you would now like to do?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, staff, how are you? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry for my laptop video here tonight, anyway. So 355 Phillips Park Road, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, is well on the construction. We had recently been back to the Board of Architecture Review for some changes to the exterior, which they approved. But we're coming back this evening to request a change to the floor plan, basically. We're seeking to convert on the ground floor, if you recall, we'll show you on the plan in a second. We had a commercial space that was next to the parking area on the ground floor. And we're thinking that that's not really going to be marketable space, and we'd like to convert that to an apartment, a one-bedroom apartment. So that really is the crux of the change itself. I'll put it up on the plan, if I can.
Could you just maybe explain to us what changes were made in the, in the site plan we already approved? The facade that was changed, I understand there was something with the windows that were put in, were larger than the windows that everyone approved?
No, actually, that, sort of that app really was the same size. The windows never changed. We just swapped out the brick area for stucco on the, on the facade of the building and changed the railings on the upper parapet and the balcony area. That was the only change at the architecture view. Again.
Okay. Now you're basically asking that this building become a 100% residential building in a commercial zone?
That's correct. Yes. Yeah, we're seeking to convert that commercial space into a one-bedroom apartment. We're going to be looking to lower a portion of the floor, so we can gain enough area for a two-story space, for a loft bedroom at the rear of the space, and construct a cantilever deck off the back of the, of the building itself. So that was, that's really the change with respect to site planning. Okay, you're trying to share this, but I'm not being able to share it. Okay, let's see where I am here. Can't wait till we meet back in person again.
Soon, I understand. We wanted to meet in the dark in the tent. We probably could have done that tonight, but it didn't work. It's not feasible.
Can you see this on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so that was the original, the plan. It was approved by the planning board at the last meeting that you mentioned. So what we're, what we're looking to do is, I'll show you the floor plan is better, is to convert this, see my cursor on the right-hand space was a previously proposed commercial space on a ground floor to a one-bedroom apartment, where the kitchen is noted on here. We're going to be lowering that floor about two feet into the existing basement space below to create an uphead room, to create a bedroom above it. We're proposing to project a cantilever, a deck off the rear portion of the, of the new dwelling, residential dwelling off of the kitchen itself. And then there'd be some changes to the exterior, which obviously we have to go back to the BAR for, for an approval. The front entrance would be just a single entrance with a, trying to make it look somewhat residential with a planter in front of it. And the elevation on the south elevation changes with respect to the windows, because we have two different elevations on there now, so. So looking at the site plan, nothing changed, but we are proposing this deck at the rear of the residence, as we mentioned. But that again, it'll be cantilever, the new structure placed in the ground, that'll be cantilever off the, off the new dwelling when we construct a new structure. New structure supporting that cantilever out the back.
How far to ground is the deck?
The deck, you can see this, it shows it's, it's a slope in the back of the property, it's probably about three feet. Closest point is about six feet at furthest point.
And so there's only one way into that unit, which is on the other side? The, the front door into the living area?
The entrance is off Phillips Park Road?
Just that one door?
One door, correct, yes.
And you're not proposing stairs off the deck?
No, we're not. No, no access from the, to the ground.
So, so you don't need a second way of getting out of that apartment in case of fire or other emergency?
Yeah, the windows that were proposed, the inside, will be, will be egress windows, so they provide the second means of egress under code.
And how far is the closest edge of that deck to the Mamaroneck River?
We're probably about 20 feet, I'd say, to the Mamaroneck River, maybe 15 feet.
Yeah, I think we run into the same 50-foot problem that we did when we looked at this application last year.
Right.
There was considerable discussion about the nonconformity within the 50-foot buffer area of the river, and now we're actually, that deck is making it worse.
Right. I think the difference is we're not building a structure into the ground, and we're just cantilevering this off. I don't know if that's what the interpretation, interpretation is from. Watch me on that, but we'd welcome any input on that, for sure.
Well, if it's, if parts fit, are only three feet from the ground, it's going to be underwater. Sometimes, therefore.
At some point.
At some point, and therefore, that's why there's a setback there. Put anything in it, that would impede the flow of the water. And, you know, there's going to be obviously water getting into the unit as well, then, if it's getting up onto the deck.
Oh, the elevation of the unit itself is above the floodplain level, though, so.
Okay. I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm a little concerned about the zoning code and this being a commercial zone, and this now being a 100% residential building. Now, by code, you have to provide one affordable apartment in the building. Is this proposed to be the affordable unit?
No, the affordable unit will be one of the upper six units.
One of the upper, okay.
The main portion of the building, correct, yes.
Well, and does this change the parking situation?
It actually lessens the parking requirement, because there's less parking. There's only one parking space required for the unit, as opposed to two or three that were required for the commercial space.
Okay, I think, does anybody have any questions? I think we understand what it is that you'd like to do. So
Necessary?
Say it again, please?
Yes, is it deck, I mean, to Cindy's point, it's kind of exacerbating a prior nonconformity, so.
No, I understand your point. It's, it's not necessary, no. It's, ideally, we'd like to have it, because it's a beautiful spot back there, of course, overlooking the river, but if we could put it in, we could have it built by code, we'd appreciate it. If not, we can't do it.
And I guess the, I mean, I was looking at the, the special permit requirements in 342-50F. So, I mean, it have, have all, items one through six, those have all been met in terms of site size, maximum FAR, maximum height of the building, off-street parking, that kind of thing, as, as someone looked at that to, to determine conformity?
Are those, as far as, as far as I know, yes, and those were compliant initially, and they still would be compliant with this application, other than the conversion of that space?
Okay. I mean, it just, it does seem a shame, you know, I, I understand the economic conditions right now, but it does seem a shame that we're going to lose a lot of commercial space, when someday, I think, there may be more of a demand for it.
I guess this is a question for, I'm sorry, who's speaking?
I'm sorry.
This is a question for either Ashley or our consulting planner, or Teresa, or land use attorney. Given that this is a, now 100%, would be a 100% residential building in, I guess, I think you're in a C2 zone, you're in a C2. I, is this something that the planning board can decide as a change in site plan, or is this something that has to, you know, I feel uncomfortable sort of when it's like a zoning issue?
It, it is allowed under the zoning for this to be a 100% residential building by special permit, because it's not on Mamaroneck Avenue.
So there has, so who, who gives a special permit for this?
This is a planning board special permit.
So besides the site plan, there's also a special permit that's required?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that under the new, new zoning?
It's 342-50. It's special permit for residents' uses.
So I think this is part of TOD?
It's residents' uses in commercial districts and transit-oriented development overlay district.
Well, is this in the, in the TOD?
It's in the C2 district.
It's like, it's just C2, not in the overlay. It's very close to the train station. Yeah, okay. All right, so it's up to the planning board to do this.
Yep. And no, no other boards or commissions have to look at this, even if with the deck within 50 feet of the river?
So the other, the BAR needs to look at the change in, in the facade. It doesn't, this change, this net difference, doesn't rise to the level of an action that would be referred to the HCZMC?
Okay.
Okay, um, and this doesn't require any review by our engineer either. Okay, and the secret, uh, determination was done, uh, when we, uh, considered this, uh, project the first time, so this doesn't change any of that, correct?
Correct, it was previously classified as an unlisted action under secret, and the board issued a negative declaration.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it, except I'm not happy with the deck.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I remember voting against this project. Um, I can, I can live, I can live with this change, but the deck has to go, it's too close to the river. What, what's beyond that, the, the deck that says wood plat?
Yeah, those, that's just remnants of a, uh, it's not even there anymore longer, wooden platform that was there with the.
Lost to there.
But beyond that, it's just landscaping, there's trees behind it.
I just, I just think we're cramming in too much stuff, uh, close to the river.
Well, and I, I realize it's just a deck, but it's increasing the.
Vis- visually too, I remember there was a lot of, a lot of testimony from the people who lived on the other side of the river. So, considering, considering that, it's, it's.
Yep, I don't think we heard from anybody, to be honest with you, but anyway, I mean.
No, at the hearing, at the public hearing, there was.
First time, yeah, the first time.
Would a shallower deck, say just a three-foot, uh, almost like a Juliet balcony be more acceptable? This, this, we're showing, uh, an eight-foot projection here, so.
Did you speak up a little bit?
I'm sorry, yes, would a, uh, shallower deck, perhaps just a three-foot nest, it's a Juliet balcony rather than an eight-foot deck?
This is an eight-foot deck?
Yes, more acceptable.
It's.
Eight-foot balcony?
Pretty big.
Yeah, eight feet.
Put a, put a couple of chairs on.
That would be better.
That would be better, is right, that would be better, uh.
I, I, I'm, I'm unhappy with even three feet, I'm sorry to say. It, I'm being sort of a purist on this.
I understand.
Um, all right, uh, can we?
Kathleen, can I make a suggestion that?
Yeah, I wanna see, I wanna get the, you know, stop sharing your screen so I can get the full planning board so we can, uh, sort of, yes, okay, Teresa, yes.
All right, um, why, why don't, uh, why don't, why doesn't the applicant, uh, go and reevaluate their connection to the deck? And come back to the board with something that may be more acceptable?
Would be fine, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's.
What was the deck part of the first, I, I wasn't on the board with the first go around, was a deck part of the, of the first time?
No, it was not, it was not, no. No, because.
Just so you know, there was a lot of discussion the first time with the fifty-foot setback, and because this was just, uh, the floor added to the building, and the print on, on the ground was staying the same, uh, we're just, they were just going up. Um, you know, that was, uh, one reason why we, uh, approved the project at this time. I think there's already a fence there, there's, there's already some things, uh, that are within the fifty foot that, um, probably nowadays wouldn't be there, but, uh, if you're gonna put in a residential building there and, uh, people have access to the yard, um, there's has to be some separation because right next to it is the public park, Phillips Park, is right there, on the other side of the, to the right of the building. Um, I under, I see that there's a, you know, the, the chain wall, and then there's gonna be like bike parking and whatnot. For the public use, if, if necessary, but, I'm sorry, this just does the allegation.
No, I was just gonna say, so, yeah, take a look at it again and, uh, consider revision and, uh, reapply or come back next month, uh, with a revise, certainly. Appreciate your input.
All right, thank you very much, it's, uh.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, this puts us then into a work session for high use. We did, we did the site plan, um, we did the site plan, uh, site, uh, I'm sorry, that was a site plan. We did a site visit last week, um, and it, uh, thank you, Susan Oakley, if she's still here, uh, uh, for suggesting it to us, because I think that was, uh, uh, an important thing that, uh, we did, we did, uh, uh, we walked the site with, uh, the architect and the owners, um, and they, and, uh, just about every branch of the planning board, I don't know, John, if you were able to go up there and look at it yourself.
Yeah.
Uh, Esteban came with those, Amber was there, um, so, oh, there, Susan, thank you, Susan, that was a good, very good suggestion. Um, so, what we agreed to do, uh, tonight was basically put our heads together and come up with a list of things that we would need from the applicant to, to, um, continue to, uh, consider this application. Uh, this application didn't begin as a site plan application, therefore it doesn't have, uh, a lot of the requirements for application of a site plan we would need. Um, so the first thing is that the applicant needs to be directed to, uh, the code, uh, three forty-two to seventy-eight, uh, and the list of what's required for, uh, for a site plan application. Uh, we need a survey, uh, we need, uh, sketch plans, we need, uh, a map showing the entire property and adjacent properties and streets at a convenient scale, all existing proposed paved areas, existing topography, lawns, meadows, shrubs, trees, watercourses, bodies of waters, wetlands, block, outcrops, prominent physical features, areas to be left undisturbed, there's a whole really long list of things, uh, for several pages. Um, so we would need an existing conditions, and then what the proposed, uh, house would look like, uh, and what the site would look like with the house on it. Where would the house be located, what would the house be look like, we need elevations, uh, we need the whole, the whole McGillah. We also, uh, received a copy of a easement, a, um.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Chair, can I just throw something in there too? I think that would be helpful for the applicant. So the standards we're supposed to use as a planning board are in section three forty-two dash seventy-six. You know, ecological considerations, landscape, um, scenic, historical, archaeological landmark sites and features, surface water drainage. You know, there are a lot of issues that we have to address, and I think that would be helpful for them to pay attention to, um, so that they address it.
Right, right.
And they're.
Landscape plan, what trees are coming down, what trees are, what, what landscape is being planted, what the uses of the property are, I mean, the whole thing. Also, let's stay on that for a minute, I would like to see a photograph, you know, taken from the street of the rock, and then just mark up the photograph of what's being removed and where the driveway is gonna go in between, like where's that section of rock that's gonna be removed, so there'll still be rock on the right side and rock on the left side. Where, where is that coming out and going? Um, like some sort of picture, or, you know, even if you mark it on the rock with, uh, washable paint and take a picture of it, and then instead of marking up the photograph, but something to give us some idea of how much rock are you removing, and, and, uh, and that's obviously the visible rock, the rock we know about. There's probably a lot more rock on the site.
Well, cer- certainly under our general criteria and standards of review, it actually does talk about, you know, talk about wetland streams, but it talks about steep slopes. And, and I think that site qualifies as a steep slope. Because I, I think, I mean, they did mention they're gonna be having geotechnical work done, um, you know, to try to figure out, we can, we can see the rock, what's there, what we can't see is what's below the surface, and obviously a lot of that would have to be excavated, more rock.
The applicant did indicate that they were hiring a geo-technical expert, uh, uh, as part of the team, um, and that they knew they had a lot of engineering work to do to resubmit to the village, um, as far as stormwater management, uh, control. Um, but, but there's a lot more than that, that has to be done as well.
What about Kathy, what, what about that easement letter that we?
Well, that, we, we need to have this.
That, that sort of confuses the issue a bit.
Um, it is confusing the issue, and quite frankly, I'm, I'm not an attorney, and I read this and I'm like, okay, what does this mean? There's an easement on the property that grants permission.
I, I, I read it, I read it that the property behind has, has, uh, an easement to come down to, uh, to Highview, to get in and out of that property, that's the way I read it.
Well, it's the property next door, that, not behind, it's the property next door, it's, it's one twenty-seven Highview Street has an easement.
Oh, okay, all right.
Highview Street, if that easement is still in existence. So Teresa actually was very helpful, um, we talked to her earlier today on this before the meeting, to sort of how should the planning board handle this. Um, and Teresa, you're gonna have to correct me if I don't get this right, but one of the things that we should request is a, is a title insurance, um, title, title, what was it, title insurance report? You're on view, yeah, just put yourself on again.
Oh, sorry, copy, copy of the title insurance and the report when they purchased the lot? Because that should tell us if this particular easement has been discharged or if it continues, it's kind of odd because it's an easement from a person to himself um, as well, which is, which is kind of odd, and Frank, I remember you had mentioned that when you were in front of the zoning board of appeals, there was something in the record indicating that the easement had been discharged?
Yes, I, I submitted that paperwork to the zoning board, it was vacated, uh, it was before Westchester County, there's, there's a, uh, you know, final disposition of that easement, it's, 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 it's gone. And I can, I, I, I'll submit that to this planning board also.
Oh, that would be great, Frank, that would be very helpful.
Okay, and we can post that, then, uh, to the public, post it on the website, and that way the public will know about it as well, because we get some members of the, from the neighbors.
I'm so sorry, could you repeat that, Kathy, I, I think you just cut out.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, um, Frank is going to share that document with us, and it should be posted along with the other application materials as well, so that members of the public, and especially the neighbors, um, are aware that this was done.
Kathy, the other interesting thing about this application is there's a, a report that was done on the site by a hydrogeologist, Paul Rubin, um, from HydroQuest, so, um, you know, I, I'm sure Esteban will take a look at this and evaluate it on behalf of the board. Uh, we should make sure that whoever the engineer is for the property owner that they also respond to the comments made in this, because it's, it's relatively unusual that you get comments by a hydrogeologist on a, you know, a single-family home, and he's pointing out quite a lot of, uh, issues here related to, um, the bedrock and the, uh, concerns with respect to the capacity of the property, once it's built, to handle the stormwater runoff. And it's, it's kind of unusual that we have a full report like this, you know, from, uh, you know, obviously it was done on behalf of a concerned neighbor, I gotta believe, and, uh.
I think more than one concerned neighbor.
Yeah, we should be sure that that's specifically addressed by the applicant and also by the, by, um.
Absolutely, I, I, I think the report was already shared with the applicant, Amber, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I think that's what prompted them to want to add a geo-technical type person to their team as well.
Again, part of what our criteria is, we're supposed to, you know, applications are supposed to preserve existing natural drainage patterns, and this hydro, report from HydroQuest seems to make it clear that they are establishing new drainage, uh, patterns, so again, it all goes into the analysis. And I, I mean, I really have a question about the rock removal, we, we saw that there was a, I don't know, a ton, maybe many tons worth of rock that had been disturbed and were just kind of sitting there. You know, the HydroQuest report seems to indicate it was broken through drilling and, you know, and, and some kind of, um, non-explosive expansive demolition agent, I, you know, like, I guess a chemical.
Rock removal, we dealt with this before.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think we're seeing a lot more applications where people do the work or some of the site work and then come in for an application. Um, you know, we, we had this problem with, with the tree law, we, that's why we were trying to enact, have the Board of Trustees enact a tree law, because people would come in and to new the property. Um, and Mizroni cited the code section where they're not supposed to do that, but, you know, there's no consequences, so everybody does it.
Well, the one, the one thing here, you've got to remember that we got this application by referral from the zoning board of appeals. Initially, there was a building permit that was issued for, that was going to be issued for the property, and, um, there was, uh, the, the issue was brought to the zoning board of appeals, and the zoning board of appeals, uh, directed that it come before you for site plan review. So this one is a little bit unusual in that respect, um, and, you know, Frank could provide greater detail on that, I believe, but, uh, so, so, I think this applicant may have done it differently if he had been aware of that in the beginning.
Yeah, I think that basically this is what we have now, we can't change anything that happened in the past. Um, I don't think there are any code restrictions for the amount of rock, uh, specifically, that can be removed or, uh, can't be removed from a site, but there are implications with removing all those rocks, environmental implications that we can pay attention to. If you remove that much rock, what happens with the natural, uh, terrain, and what happens with the, uh, this, the patterns and the, and the run locks and, and, uh, so I, I, it's, it's, it makes it harder for us because we don't have that kind of code, unless I'm wrong, but I couldn't find anything, we don't have a steep slopes law, um, which a lot of communities have, where if the slope is certain amount, it's on, an unbuildable lot. Because we don't have that many steep slopes here in the man, we're basically a, you know, a coastal community that's pretty flat, um, as we know from our flooding history. Um, but, um, so it, it makes it a little bit more complicated for us to do a review of an application like this. You know, how much is enough, and how much is too much? Um, I think we, we, uh, we normally see this type of a dilemma or a question coming to the board with the opposite, usually in a flood zone, and how much is too much with regard to putting in fill and things like that. This is the opposite of that, so, so, um, this is something that we'll work with and work on and, and think about. Um, so, I don't know, uh, we, what we will do, um, is, um, compile wha- what we've said here and, uh, send a, a written communication to the applicant with regards to additional information we feel we need in order to continue with our review. Doesn't mean this is a be-all and end-all list, uh, you may, as we go forward, uh, want additional information, but this is a, uh, this is a unique application for us, and I think it warrants a thorough review. I don't think anybody would disagree with them. Does anybody have anything else they want to add, besides what's already requested, incorporated in the code and the other things we've added? If, if Frank has the, um, the information with regards to the easement being vacated, we don't need to ask that from the applicant.
The only thing I would add myself is. The only thing I would add myself is the proof in the pudding is gonna be the test holes and the borings.
Yeah.
There's amazing amount of rock everywhere that'll make a difference. If there's places to put stormwater retention, that's a different story. So I think that's gonna tell the story.
I agree.
I I think we made it clear to them that stormwater was going to be a major issue for us, so. I, maybe we reiterate that in the memo.
Right. I don't, yeah, underline it in bold, caps, all caps. Okay, does anybody have anything else? It's we're at the end of the agenda then. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, same time, same place, same Zoom channel. I don't think we'll be in person yet and we probably will do a hybrid, we'll be like the schools, we'll do a hybrid model. Since we have some people that are coming from Tennessee. We thought it was bad that Teresa was coming from the Albany area.
Makes me look boring.
We got to keep them nice on Tennessee.
I think you have draft minutes too, Kathy.
I didn't have anything on the agenda for minutes, so even though I submitted them from our site visit, they didn't get put on the agenda, so we'll do them next time. We need to catch.
They they are, they are, sorry, they are at the top, they are just under.
I have planning board review minutes for the following meeting and there's nothing written there. But.
April fourteenth and March twenty-fourth?
I don't have. Then, and this was the final agenda I had. So.
I didn't see that.
I didn't prepare, I I worked off this agenda that I had written and said final agenda. So I'm sorry, I would have done them in the beginning, we'll have to carry them over to the next meeting. And they didn't get sent to us, right? We'd have to go download them from Novus, right, so.
They are in the drive, they are in the shared file, there's an admin folder in addition.
Is that where they are? Because I never, I never go there. Okay.
Application.
All right, we'll do it next time, sorry. Didn't, I I just have that sort of blank, you know, holding from the agenda on my copy of the agenda, ready to go after them. All right, that's everything for everybody, we're good. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting then, it's eight fifty-three PM.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Kathy.
Good night, stay safe.
Aye, thank you.
Night.